Good morning. It's Wednesday, March 5th, 2014. We're in the Commissioners Boardroom, 1115 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem, for a weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little bit wet. Our chairs are misbehaving, but we're still going to try to have a meeting. We'll start our meeting with the public comment. I know we have several people come up, have signed up. Don't know if you'd bring that here. If you would, when I call your name, if you'd come up just in a couple of minutes, give an explanation of what you'd like to tell us, starting with your name and address. And the first is Amy Zimmerman.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're following up. I'm Amy Zimmerman in Temendra.
I'm Temendra.
We're at 5150 Norma Avenue South in Salem, Oregon, 97306. And we want to just kind of touch bases with you. I know it's been a couple of weeks since we've been here. And the hot topic of the medical marijuana is at the front of our minds. And we recognize that the House and the Senate are kind of going back and forth on whether to allow a ban or a temporary ban. And I just want to please remind you that I believe, from what we're reading and hearing, the point of a temporary ban would be to create an ordinance. And I know you guys have been very proactive in creating an ordinance. So, and we've given you some of our thoughts on it, and we'd love to talk more with you about that. But let's try to think about the not banning because we're operating, we've been around since August under the state of Oregon temporary rules through the Public Health Authority. We've had no issues, given back to the community, and we're continuing to do more. We just created a food drive, and can let some of our staff tell you more about that. But we want to show you that we're here for community support. Public safety is at the top of our priority list. And we're not here to cause any harm.
We're just two moms that started a family business and believed wholeheartedly in it because of our son. This is what kind of got us in this direction. Because her son was unable to eat. I mean, he was in, he was, had to go to the hospital because he was not weighing enough. So, I mean, we aren't here to cause any problems. We're not. We just, we just want to be part of the community and help everyone. We just want to work together.
And with our 289 registries yesterday morning, or on the 3rd, boy, it's all blur these days.
Yeah, Monday.
1.1 million dollars to the state we gave.
1.16 million dollars.
You know, we can bring some of that revenue to the county as well.
Yeah, let's bring it back to the kids. That's what this is about anyways. I would love to see some of this money go into our public school systems because that's one of, it's a big main concern for me. Another problem in our community is the school systems. Changed a lot just this past years, past 10 years, it's gone down in quality.
Do you have any other questions for us at this time you can help with?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Charlotte, call. And again, if you'd pull those right up, I should have.
Morning, guys.
Morning.
So, another underlying factor here is that one of our association is outside of the rural area and is looking at having to be closed down. And I want to just talk about, the one great thing that has come out of all of this is the greatest sense of community that I can ever explain. I mean, if you guys temporary ban us, we're just going to be back in a year doing the same thing with a stronger community. And the club that you're trying to shut down is an amazing club run by a young man who has supported himself and has built himself alive and has taken care of patients and has had no problems at his club and who I have become friends with throughout all of this and find to be someone who could possibly be sitting in one of your chairs some, one, someday. And I just think that, I just want to really express that we have gotten the greatest sense of community from this. If we walk away with nothing else, we have that. We have great association. And a temporary ban is going to be temporary. And we'll be there in the end, and he'll be there in the end, and we'll just find another way around it. So, and we'll be here every Wednesday if we need to be. You know, it's become a regular routine. I see you guys more than I've seen half my family members, so that's all.
All right, Margot Lucas.
Good morning, everybody. I'm just going to make a brief comment. I'm Margot Lucas. I live in Polk County, Oregon. I represent the Oregon and the Salem Cannabis Industry Associations, as well as I run a, the Alternative Relief Clinic. We, we just want to thank you guys for having an open dialogue with us and letting us come in and make public comment. We understand that the law is on, you know, really unplayed out at this point. And we just want to ask everybody on the panel to keep an open dialogue with us. We want to work with you. We want you to work with us. And we were, we're all going to endeavor to, to move this forward, and we hope that you will interface with us in a very positive way. And on that note, if you don't have any questions, I'll go ahead and keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Ross.
Name and address, right?
Please.
Okay. Christopher Ross, 4088 State Street. I just want to start today by saying, thank you for working with us. And because of that, I contacted Gloria and asked for extra restrictions, which, like she said, is not the norm. But I felt it was reasonable and necessary. And I'm willing to work with you and Sheriff Myers, which, three and a half years ago, when I opened, I had a meeting with Sheriff Myers, and we let him know we were opening. And at that time, I asked him if he had any concerns that we could alleviate. He said, no. We then, every year to the day, after that, contacted him and asked if he had any concerns in which we could work on. And every time, he said, no. I attempted four times now to work with Sheriff Myers, but to no avail from his end. The only police contact we've had in three and a half years was when a man jumped our fence and our security guard had seen him on camera. And I chased after him and pointed him out to the sheriffs chasing him because he just committed a robbery down the street. All the sheriff thanked me so much and said, if it wasn't for me and our help, that we would not have caught, they would not have caught him. I have shown to the county and the sheriffs that I'm willing to work together, but it takes two to come to an agreement. Due to the cold report from the feds, the bank has now assigned a representative to oversee me, which will be about 10 times the oversight of the OHA will have on me. The rep from my bank that oversees me reports directly with the Department of Justice to make sure I'm following 3460 plus the extra oversight of the bank and the feds. If there is any doubt about the fed's stance, I will give you my bank rep's number who oversees me and said upon inspection that he was blown away how we have implemented extra rules outside 3460 and the county's rules. He said we are the only one the bank will deal with for now. But after our inspection, he personally told me we were one of the most professional businesses he has seen even in the normal business world. Between 3460, the rules presented by the county and my bank and the federal government's rules and oversight, I did not see how we could have, not have sufficient enough rules and regulations to go by to move forward with the permit process. And in closing, I hope we can show the rest of the state that in the times we live in of war, famine, political upheaval, and economic recession, we can work together with our representatives, and our representatives can work together with their constituents to solve issues big and small. Thank you.
Kimberly Strand.
Good morning. Kimberly Strand, 647 Menlo Drive, Kaiser, Oregon. I just want to say that if there is a ban, you're displacing so many patients. And I know the overall mentality of this committee's been, they can just go somewhere else. Well, many of our patients don't drive. They don't have access to transportation. They ride the bus, they walk, and they need to have access locally. I've personally watched Chris over the last three and a half years change his business. He bought, had a dilapidated building. It is now been, is one of the nicest buildings in his neighborhood. I noticed the other day there were about 209 applications. We estimated that there were between 180 and 200 of these dispensaries already operating in the state of Oregon for the last three to five years with virtually no issues. So, it's no surprise to us that it was not an astronomical number of people applying for applications on Monday morning. Many of these businesses are, are in existence and have been in existence in their communities for three to five years. And like Chris said, when we contact our local law enforcement, they don't have issues with us. They're actually pleased with how well we've done and the things we've done in our communities. Cleaned up our buildings. We offer lots of community service and community outreach to people who otherwise might not have it. So, again, I ask you to think about your local community, who you all work for, and not displace them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next item this morning will be the consent calendar. I'm not sure who's.
And before I do consent, I think I need by motion to make an adjustment.
I think just when the motion's made on that.
Just when the motion's made.
Please.
All right. Okay. So then we won't make the motion now. We'll make it. But it is a different amount than what was published on the agenda.
Correct.
All right, so I'll go ahead then and move today's consent calendar. Under Board of Commissioners, we have an OLCC application recommended for approval. Nacho Growler in Salem. Approve Amendment Number One to add $27,940 to the contract with Cascade Sound and Light for audiovisual work in Courthouse Square. Under Health, approve an order reappointing Renee Stewart to the Marion County Health Advisory Board for a term ending January 31st, 2017. Also, approve the following amendments to the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Health Authority for the financing of community addictions and mental health services. A is Amendment Number Nine, approving $251,687 in Service Element 37 Flex Funds. And B is Amendment Number Ten, adding $1,032,068 for Invest in Capacity and Community Mental Health Funding.
Second motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar that was just read. Any further discussion? Hear any? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A motion passes. I'd like to change the order a little bit. We have a request to get these people out of here so they can work on Courthouse Square. If that's, I'm not trying to hide anything, John. You asked for it. I'll give it to you. So, we'll go to item number four. Consider approval of a change order, number eight, that adds 100, a new number, $125,865.87 to the contract with Structural Preservation Systems for the Courthouse Square remediation project. John Latimer, Peggy Mitchell, whoever I'd like to start.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, you should have a list of all of these items. There are 47, a variety of different changes that we've run into. Some of them due to changing office space. Some of them to, for the addition of meeting rooms, of course. Then we have on the second floor, the changes for the Elections Division of the Clerk. I can go through and explain every one of them if you'd like. And Peggy can help me. Would you like me to do that?
Well, I'd like at least an overview, a general description. And then if we would have further, deeper questions or questions that would need to go delve deeper, that would be good. I think it's really important that the public has the opportunity to hear this.
All right. Number one, these first and second floor improvements were due to, part of it was changes in the area that transit uses and particularly changes in Courthouse Square, where, or in Center Hearing Room, where we had, we upgraded the audiovisual system there because it was, as you'll remember, it was beginning to get a little touchy. And we also upgraded for CCTV. The, the three and four really transits, you know, they had those modular units there. While the construction was going on, those had to be taken out. And then there were places in the concrete that had to be repaired because of that. We got a credit for, because they're not going to remove the blinds. We did that ourselves. The fifth floor water heater, there's a water heater for the building on the fifth floor, unbeknownst to me, but we found out about it. And it was in very bad shape, so we had it replaced. The, on the number seven and number 11 really are, are part of the same thing. The server room on the fourth floor needed work. And so we needed to get power. Part of that power was for transit because transit is going to be using that server room now. And, and then we got a credit there because we didn't change the ceiling in that server room. The CAT 6 lines, the lines in transit, that's all transit. They wanted to upgrade CAT 6. We didn't do that on our side. Wireless access points, that's again, a transit. And they were doing quite a bit of upgrade for fiber and that kind of thing, particularly for, I think, their security cameras. The, I'm not sure about this, one credit on number 12. Do you know that one, Peggy?
That one is in the lobby. Part of structural's contract was to replace the entire ceiling grid. So, it's the grid in the tiles. And as we got down to the elevator lobby areas and the first floor, there were areas where, when we looked at the grid, it was in perfectly good condition. So, the recommendation came back from the contractor. Rather than take out what was good, let's just reuse the existing, and they put in new ceiling tile. So, there were several areas in the first floor that were small contained rooms that they were able to do that. When we get to the upper floors, you've got long spans of ceiling tile that went from one end of the building to the next. So, you'll see several credits on there, and that's what those are is we opted to, to save the owners some money and not replace those. So, you'll see a couple of different line items where we agreed to do that.
Those sir, those tiles, ceiling tiles in the Center Hearing Room are more expensive tiles too, so we're reusing those. Second floor access control changes. One of the things that the clerk was concerned about was where, in the room where we are now going to store election materials, particularly ballots, they wanted to make sure that that was secure. So, we're, particularly with, they wanted, didn't want people to be able to get over through the ceiling into there. So, we've got, they put in these clips to tie down the ceiling. This expansion joint installation, there were, we've discovered, and they did this without telling us. So, we came to a conclusion that we would share the cost with them. So, half of it ours and half of it structural's. Because they did that without telling us. We upgraded this.
I was going to just explain the expansion joint. In some of the areas, some of the conditions that we saw, you might have seen in a long wall, there might have been a crack in the drywall. And so, as the architect looked at it, that was his recommendation is that you need to take some of those expansion spaces, the long drywall runs, and then just put in an expansion joint so that it, it puts a seam in it. And you'll see several of those that got installed over doors. So, in, an example, we had one in the fourth floor in the finance, right above our back door. There was a small crack up above. So, that was the architectural solution or the design solution to prevent those types of cracks or the walls separating in the future. So, most of them were included in the tenant improvement piece. This was in areas of walls that weren't necessarily going to be touched by, by the project.
If I could, I really appreciate that because, say, expansion joint, it would be easy to have, have a mental picture of some huge, heavy duty.
No.
And this is a very small drywall.
Right.
If you'll notice it in the hearing rooms. And I will give kudos to the teams that are working on this. I mean, they did a phenomenal job of wallpapering into those expansion joints. And so they.
You'll be able to see them.
Yeah. So, they've, they've done a nice job. But, but the fix is to prevent future cracking, so.
The Wi-Fi, we've, we're installing Wi-Fi on the fifth floor in, in a meeting room there. We also have a meeting room on the second floor that needed a floor box for electrical additions. We abandoned 11 floor boxes around the building where they weren't needed any longer. They gave us a credit for that first floor ceiling grid. We're also having them install the, now, these aren't whips that you use. Yeah, no. They're the tails that come off the low voltage for the hooking up to the modular furniture. And they're installing those. The, then, let's see. The corner guard installation, they're, they're, on some of the hallways, there are corner guards. So, when people bring, bring stuff in and they run into those, they don't damage the walls. We had a urinal that leaked, and was that on the fourth floor?
It was on the fourth floor.
And it damaged the drywall and, and the floor. So, they had to repair all of that. And we're probably going to come later with another one because we're finding that a lot of the toilets and urinals are in bad shape. So, we're probably going to have, have to have those fixed, fixed up. The clips in the tax office, that's again, the need to secure the Elections Office because it's right next to the tax office. Bulletproof glasses for the DA's office. And we're installing wiring in the basement for electrical car hookups. There are pressure, pressure blocks in the basement that allow for expansion. And those had dropped several inches, and so they had to repair those in the basement.
They were tripping hazard, anything more than a half inch depression would be a tripping hazard. So, we had those all pulled out and replaced.
The, we had, as you remember, there were lights all around the building on the outside. We found some of them had literally burned out. One of them had burned through the.
The lens, lens cover?
Well, the lens cover, but the, the ballast.
Oh, the ballast.
The ballast had burned up. So, we've, we're, they're cleaning all of those and they're replacing all of the ballast and the lights there. Then this.
And the reason, I'll just kind of point out, the reason there's a credit there in the earlier change order, our first intention was just to replace the whole light fixture. And we got light fixtures in, and they were very small. So, then we said, well, let's just get a new LED kit, and it would replace the ballast and the lens. So, we paid for a full replacement. But when those came in, the sample that we saw, just, it, it didn't meet our expectations. So, we reverted back to just cleaning what was there and, and repair. So, we are getting a credit back on that line item.
It was a very small light. I don't think it would have done much for anything.
No.
So, we did get a credit there. The, the Transit District is, is redoing their security system, system, their security camera system. And they, they've got a, both a cost and then a deduction for, and I'm not sure why they, do you remember how they?
They, they had some adjustments to their pricing. And so, they, they provided transit with the $48,000 pricing. But then, when they came back and made some adjustments, or actually, it was 42. So, the credit, they credited back the original price that they charged for camera, security camera, and then, and adjusted and made some changes. So, that was the cleanest way, was just to reverse what we were charged originally and then do a new pricing for security cameras.
In the fifth floor, there's a, what do you call those rooms?
Break room.
Break room.
Break room.
And on the floor, there was a, almost like a hole. There was a big dip. And so, that was going to be on the fifth floor where we're going to be. And so, we asked them to fix that. And, and they had to take up the VCT they'd put down and then replace it after they fixed it. We, we're putting security film on the windows. This is transit's, and it helps secure those windows. We're also putting film on the north block stairwells. I don't know whether it's in here or not. We're also putting film on the windows on the front of the building so they can't be damaged by graffiti scratching.
Anti-graffiti film. It was on there originally. So, we replaced everything, and that was in a, in a previous change order. We just missed the north block, the two passenger entrances.
We've, as we've gone through this, we've had enormous fun with our HVAC system and the fire system in the building. So, you have fire dampers that close to keep smoke from getting into the hallways. And because the hallways are fire rated so people can get out, those dampers were not working, a lot of them. So, we've had, we've had to fix those fire dampers. Then this next one is again, on transit, it's the modular unit damage repair. Oh, the lights going down in the ramp to the garage, we had to have those repaired. They weren't working. We had the thermostats, this is part of the, again, the HVAC problem we were having. So, we had to relocate a lot of the thermostats. And they, primarily, a lot of it was in transit, but a lot of it was ours too. Because when the, they were placing a place where if you put in a modular furniture, it would be right up against that thermostat. So, we had to move it so it would be accessible to the air. Again, you've got more security camera issues for transit. And they're, they had cabling that was in one of their rooms on the first floor there along by the transit mall that was removed. How do I describe 38?
So, 38, on the second floor, if you remember, our lobby area there had a black ceramic tile on, on the floor.
Oh, yeah.
So, it was in the lobby area, and it went down the hall to where our building inspection and community services planning areas were. So, as we were going through, part of the contract was that structural needed to replace all the flooring, including that tile. But when they got down to that area, that tile was no longer available. It, we couldn't find a match. We also, in our tenant improvements, extended that hallway beyond. And so, we had part tile going about two-thirds of the way down. And then we needed, we had nothing to fill in that, the new hallway. So, after some discussion, we went back and forth with, we would just rebuild that elevator lobby on the second floor to match the existing floors up above three, four, and five. And then that allowed us to go pick a new black ceramic tile edge that goes around all of the lobby areas. And so, in our agreements and discussions with structural, this one is coming out as a no-cost change order. But it is a change from the plan that we are taking the second floor elevator lobby and corridors will now be consistent materials and finishes with the, with the upper floors.
This, this additional casework, we had a lot of casework in the building that was old, damaged, and some of it was changed when we moved offices around. So, we've redone a lot of that casework. We've also used a lot of the old casework. So, you'll be able to see, and you'll be able to tell where the new casework is and where the old is. But we have tried to save as much of the old casework as we can. But we've had to redo a substantial part of it.
Excuse me, question. So casework, what are you referring to?
Cabinets. Cabinets, so it's workroom cabinets, some reception counters. In some cases, those have been either rebuilt, remodeled. Most of them probably just got a new countertop and backsplash on them. But for the most part, we tried to use the drawers, the cabinets in those pieces.
And then the next one is a credit. We're not installing the USB audio visual. Another audio visual credit for the fifth floor. Inclement weather claim, this is really not a money item. It's a change in their substantial completion date because of the snow. And they couldn't, they literally couldn't get suppliers into the place and a lot of the employees couldn't get to Courthouse Square. So they've gotten, the substantial completion date was March 11th. And we've changed it to March 17th.
Seventeenth. And as part of our contract negotiation, that was a provision that we spent a fair amount of time on making sure we had appropriate language. We did go back to what they call an unusual weather event, checking back for a five year period. And as both structural and the owners checked NOAA, we went back to NOAA to see in this latest December storm. Did put them back. They were actually shut down for three and a half days. But then it took an extra couple of days just to get the local suppliers back on site. Concrete was a big one because they were due to pour the drive aprons that next week or in that timeframe. So we've agreed to a contract extension and you'll see that language further in the change order.
This TI credit is for the restaurant. And this is, again, this is a transit issue because they own, or they lease those restaurants. Smoke detector, annual inspection. We've got a large number of annual inspections that we have to go through for the building. Smoke detector sprinkler system. We found recently in the back, we just had a backflow, water backflow, sewer backflow inspection. And there were several failures, so those are going to have to be fixed before we can get approval from the city. And then we had some additional leveling on the fifth and fourth floors. We had in our contract, because if you'll remember, there were several dips. Mr. Brent Towne and I used to trip on them in the fourth floor. We'd walk down through the carpet. And we had in the contract for them to fix those areas. Well, as we were going along, we found some additional ones. And so we wanted to get those. I mean, if you're going to fix this floor, these floors, you might as well do it all the way. And then we had, there's an electrical box, a transit box that needed to be painted that wasn't part of the contract. So they're paying for that, so. Now Peggy can answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, John.
No, thank you. That was helpful to have the clarification on those and items that certainly need the attention.
And I will say we are at 90%, or 98% or over 98% complete on the building. As John said, we're down to 12 days to substantial completion. And there is a lot of hustle and bustle going on over at the site. I don't know if any of you have driven by, but the overhead protection was taken down this weekend. So it is starting to come back to life and look like the old building that we knew and loved and lived in, so.
Actually, it looks better.
It does. It does. It's getting that new refreshed look.
But we're spending now time going through our observations of the fixes and making a lot of notes on what we think needs to be fixed before final completion. And it's taking a lot of time. That's why we want to get out of here, go get back to that.
All right, any other questions? I just might make note, these lovely plastic drapes and these broken chairs are available. Thank you.
We'll make sure Barb gets those on her list.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the change order number eight to add. Oh, this is where we have a change. Yes, I'm sorry, there's been a change to change order eight. The amount has changed from $131,619.44 to $125,865.87. Just to say that, so.
I added it up twice to make sure.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And it's a little bit less. The total is less, so that's always good news. So I would approve the change order number eight to add $125,865.87 to the contract with Structural Preservation Systems LLC for the Courthouse Square remediation project. And if I could just make a quick comment. The, we all know how awful the weather was. And the other day, John was talking about this change and the timing and the contract that Peggy mentioned. And it is important that we do that. We all know. I was housebound for about three days because of that weather. And you just can't expect that they would have gotten these things done. And they need the time to do it properly, not rush through it. So one of the questions I raised then was, we have a rededication ceremony for April 2nd. And I understand that this change, though, does not affect that date and the plan. So just wanted to put that out there. Okay.
And you'll notice on that change order, there was an added column to this one that we hadn't seen before. And it gave dates completed by dates. There are some items that we came to agreement that would not have to be done for substantial completion. In our contract, we had lots of discussion on what substantial completion means to both the owner and to the contractor. And so some of those are little things that can be done during that, the time period from substantial to final, where they're trying to finish those. Our big push is to get those main things done that need to be done for the rededication. And we'll be able to open up certain floors for tours on that day, so that's been our push.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I think the important thing to know is that with all of our engineering help on the other side that we've hired to watch this project, the building itself is completely fixed. I mean, it's, so what we're going through now are the finishes. And while it's just tedious work to make sure all the finishes are done, I know the way you would want them to be. And I think you'll be pleasantly surprised at how nice it looks inside.
Well, my biggest concern is that these areas that needed attention and the reason we were doing the remediation was to fix what was broken. And that's the primary issue, that those things are in fact fixed and not areas that need to come back a few months later and, oh, this was overlooked or there wasn't agreement or whatever the case may be. So just, and John knows how strongly I feel about this, that I don't want any delays. We have a contract that specifies when things are finished. At the same time, we need to know that everything has been completed as per the contract and that we don't find out later that something was overlooked or something was done in a manner that wasn't specified or expected. This fix is going to be the fix. Or I'm not going to be happy. But in these conversations we've had, I am feeling much more comfortable that we are on track and we will have a product that meets our expectation and is according to the contract.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, one of the things that you can anticipate because of life cycle changes in the equipment, the mechanical, electrical plumbing stuff was not what we would like to have seen when we got in there, particularly the HVAC. And as you know, that stuff's very expensive. So we're trying to make sure that stuff is all fixed and operable and will operate for a good, long time.
One of the other things, one of the issues we had was leaking and water getting into the parking structure. So our rainy season that we've been having now is, has been pretty, very good for looking at cracks and doing injections to try and seal those off so that we don't get the water infiltration as we have in the past. And so structural has kind of taken a very good approach to that. I mean, they started in the fall doing that. And then as we've had these rainy seasons, they go back down into the parking structure again. And so they're kind of checking those, kind of on their way out the door just to make sure that they're taking care of that issue down in the basement.
One of the things that we discovered yesterday is that we still have a problem with the roof leaking. So they're going to have to fix that. And it just, that roof, you remember that system, the, what do you call that ridge over the top?
The parapet?
Parapet was not installed properly. And now they've been trying to fix that. Well, we've discovered yesterday when we were doing our walkthrough that it's leaking again, so they're going to have to fix that.
All right, is there a second?
I will second the motion and just add, thank you, John and Peggy and Jan and Barb and Cindy and whoever else is on the team for all the time that you're putting into this to.
Gordine is.
Yeah, Gordine, making sure everything is done correctly so we can get back in.
Did you mention Bruce? We're always supposed to. I just found that out.
Bruce and Bruce.
And Bruce. And Ateesh.
Okay, everybody.
Lots of people.
Lots of people.
All right, so we moved and seconded that we do approve a change order for $125,865.87 with structural for Courthouse Square remediation. Further discussion? I don't hear any. Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you both. So now we'll go back to where we should have started. And I'm sorry if we've kept you waiting, but the first item was a good one. Consider approval of a proclamation designating March 2014 as American Red Cross Month in Marion County of Don Russo and Willamette chapter, the American Red Cross Executive Director Maria Salazar. Maria, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
No, that's okay. Thank you very much for having me this morning. My name is Maria Salazar. I'm the executive director for the American Red Cross. We oversee three counties, and that's Marion, Polk, and Lincoln. I just like to talk about Marion, of course. Marion County, it is actually the largest county as far as population and volunteers and support that we have at the American Red Cross. This time, we are, we have been around for over 90 years in this city. And we are just very proud to be serving these three counties. Our volunteers consist of over 200 volunteers within this area. And they all do different things from logistics to disaster preparedness to being part of the blood drives and giving blood, everything you can think of. We also have nurses, we have doctors, we have mental health providers that support in different areas depending on the disaster that we're responding to. We respond to small disasters that don't make the media. And we respond to large disasters such as the typhoon that we just had in December, working with the Philippines Red Cross. So we have five lines of services within the American Red Cross, and that's international support. As you just mentioned, we are an international nonprofit. And so if there's a disaster around the world, we work with that particular country. We send our volunteers who are experts in different areas to the particular areas that are in need. We have, our other line of service is military, which is our service to the armed forces. We connect families. We help military men and women transition into either the community that are coming to or the families that are staying behind, helping them with that change in their lives. We, our other line of services is health and safety, which we train people on first aid, CPR, become a first responder. We also teach aquatics and babysitting training for young youth to learn how to stay and take care of their siblings or eventually find a little job during, you know, away from, while they're off on vacation. The other line of service is blood services. Everybody's familiar with that. We have actually collected 23, I want to be, make sure I say it, 23,000 units of blood within our county. And that's just, each unit can save up to three lives. And that's just a lot of lives that have been saved out there from this county. Our community is really supportive. And people here, if they can give money, they can give time, they give blood. And either way, you're helping someone and you're supporting. The other line of services, which is, we're another one that we're very commonly, we're very known for is the disaster program. We prepare, we respond, and we help people recover from a disaster. So here in our county, we have responded to over 60 local disasters in the last year. That's from Aurora all through the county that separates us, well, the city that separates us, Turner, I believe, that separates us from Lynn County and Marion County. We go to Silverton. We have actually an entire group of volunteers at the Silverton High School that respond, ready to respond in that area. And all through, this Salem area, of course, has the largest volunteers and has the largest programs. We have assisted here 133 military families that either needed some kind of help in relaying a message to their servicemen or women. And we have helped them transition. So that's a lot of families that we support for the military. That's actually, if you know the American Red Cross, that's our core. That's how we started connecting, back in the Civil War. We were connecting families that were looking for the loved ones who were in battle. That's actually our core and that's our pride. We have trained over 3,000 local residents on first aid, CPR, and water safety skills. We have trained over 1,500 residents on disaster response or disaster preparedness, letting them know how to have a kid, what to do, make a plan with your family in case of disasters. You notice, just a couple of weeks ago or a month ago, we had that snowstorm. We, some of the individuals were saying, wow, I'm glad I took that class because now I know what to do. We can get a disaster here in our local communities. So we are very proud to do that in our communities. We have also deployed over 60 individuals to Sandy, which was the largest disaster that we had nationally in the East Coast. They're all from here. They're from Kaiser, they're from Salem, they're from Silverton, they're from Aurora, Wilburn. Just local people that just decided to be trained and respond at any moment's notice. They go out there, they're there within 24 hours, and they're helping out. They're coming back in two weeks. And that's how it is. And we do this all year round. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one, you didn't mention the real heroes.
Right. September 11th, we have our Real Heroes Breakfast here at the conference center. And what we do, we ask the community to submit a nomination of individuals that have performed any kind of life-saving or extraordinary, like an extraordinary work, such as helping people by feeding the homeless or by partnering with other agencies, by anything that you consider a hero. We look at it and then we have a committee that selects about five heroes. And then we present them and feature them and honor them on September 11th. And we've chosen that day because of the response, the 9/11 in 2001. And we know that there were just individuals out there that were, they just responded based on, you know, because they're kind and they were, they just saw human in need. And I think that that's an honorable thing and we like to honor people within our communities. So if you know anyone out there that is, you consider a hero, please call us or look at us on the website. We're on redcross.org/willamette. And then you can submit your application. We're on redcross.org/Wellamid, and then you can submit your application. You could call our office. We're actually west Salem, right across the bridge. Uh, call us, let us know. We'll send you the application. If you want the application, uh, on paper or, you know, want it to be green, you submit it online. Uh, but yeah, it's, everyone's invited. Just let us know that you're coming, and it's on September eleventh at eight in the morning at the Conference Center.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner?
Sure. Well, before I make the motion, I would just want to thank you for coming, Maria, and for all, sharing all of that great information. And, uh, I know all of us have been involved with the Red Cross throughout our lives. It plays a really important role. When you were talking about our disaster here, our snowstorm, and I was, certainly we were inconvenienced, you couldn't get out, and, um, and I went through a lot of things in my pantry that I had forgotten that I had there for cooking, and, uh, and so that was really kind of a good experience to understand. I mean, if it would have gone a lot longer, I'm not sure that we would have managed much longer, but, uh, you know, it was, um, it certainly was an experience. But I compared that, when you were talking about overseas and, and the disaster in the Philippines, um, I was recalling, there's a woman in our congregation at my church, and she's a very petite woman. She moved in, um, probably six months ago. And, uh, she came to church the day after this disaster happened, and I just said hello to her, and we were gonna go over and make a visit because she was new in our congregation. And I realized that she was just trembling and, uh, that, uh, her family lived in that area of the Philippines where that disaster hit. And so when we went to see her, she hadn't slept all night. Uh, she had received a text from a brother who had received information, I think from the family member that was living over there, and the last text he got said, "Our roof is blowing off," and then it just went black, and they didn't, couldn't get any information from him. So they didn't know if they were alive, uh, didn't know how they were doing. And then finally, uh, that, later that afternoon, she got word that, uh, that he was alive and that they had survived the storm. But so, I, it was a heightened interest for me. I was tracking the news, you know, hourly, trying to find out what was going on and the length of time it took for supplies to get in, and those people just had nothing. You know, everything was demolished. They didn't have electricity, they didn't have, I mean, their homes were destroyed. Um, and the role that the Red Cross can play in bringing those supplies in and just how people were just, you know, cheering when they finally were able to get what they needed over there. It just shows the critical importance of an organization that provides that kind of service. So, again, I want to say thank you for your work and for the work of the Red Cross across our, our world that, that helps with those kinds of situations.
Thank you. And if that, if anything like that happens again, you can always contact our office. We, uh, always set up, uh, ways of you can contact your family overseas. Uh, for instance, during that time, we had, uh, a website where we were posting names of people we found or people we talked to that were in the U.S. and, uh, kind of connecting those families. So always connect us. Uh, the Red Cross is all over, so there's a way of us getting ahold of someone somewhere out there. Um, so if that happens, let us know, and just let us, tell them to contact us. We'll, we'll help out.
Okay. Thank you for that. So I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the proclamation designating March two thousand fourteen as American Red Cross Month in Marion County.
And I'd be very happy to second that, and I, I was, um, it's, it's so impressive when you talk about all the things that the volunteers here in Marion County, much less around the world, but of course, we're more familiar right here with what many of our neighbors experience in these situations and events, natural disasters. So, um, you play, and Red Cross plays a vital role, and very, very happy that, that you're here and able to do what you do. And, uh, the, the real heroes, I wanted you to talk about that because I've had the honor to be involved in that, in looking through the nominees, and it's very, very difficult that, that we have a lot of people throughout this region who are definitely doing heroic things, just out of the goodness of their heart and their, their call to just serving each other. So that's really an important thing, that recognition and doing that once a year, recognizing that handful of people. It just, I think that encourages others that-
Yes.
-not to be afraid to, um, to help, to jump into action when someone's life is in danger, and it's people helping people, which there's nothing better. So, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation, uh, of March as American Red Cross Month in Marion County. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Now, uh, just a second longer, Maria. We will read this proclamation. Commissioner Carlson, would you begin?
Sure. In the matter of proclaiming American Red Cross Month in Marion County, a proclamation, this matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on Wednesday, March fifth, two thousand and fourteen. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a time to recognize and thank our everyday heroes. Heroes are those ordinary people who perform extraordinary acts to aid others in need. Red Cross heroes are ready to act when a crisis arises. And?
Whereas the Board of Commissioners finds it appropriate to recognize our heroes in Marion County who help people affected by disasters, donate blood to save lives, and provide comfort and compassion to individuals in times of emergencies. They provide round-the-clock support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and teach life-saving classes in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. And whereas across the country and around the world, the Red Cross responds to tragedies such as home fires, floods, and natural disasters. And the Red Cross assists members of the armed forces, their families, and veterans. In Oregon, nearly two thousand volunteers stand ready to help when disaster strikes. And?
Whereas across the nation, the month of March is dedicated to all those who support the Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our communities depend on the Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Now therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners declares March two thousand fourteen as American Red Cross Month. And now we have a nice, I don't know how it got signed ahead of time. I think we were gonna agree. But we'd like to present you with this, and perhaps, Don, you could take some pictures. We'll meet down there just for a second.
Yes? Whatever. Squeeze a little closer, could you? Here, three.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. I have it.
We consider adoption of a, an amendment to the Oregon Medical Marijuana Dispensary Facility Ban and Ban Exemption Permit Ordinance to Regulate Hours of Operation. And this will be by emergency procedure. Scott, you're racing up. Scott Norris, Gloria Roy, whoever would like to lead this.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'll start off and then turn it over to Scott. Two weeks ago, the board passed ordinance thirteen thirty-three that, uh, banned, insert in certain areas, medical marijuana dispensaries in the farm and forest land, and provided a ban exemption permit, uh, for other areas in the commercial and industrial zones. Since that time, we were approached by a potential applicant who suggested a couple of additional, uh, regulations to be considered by the board, and hours of operation was something that the board had not put in their original ordinance. It is something that appears that, uh, the state is explicitly considering allowing in local regulations. And we have, uh, discussed this with the sheriff's office, because as it is now, it potentially could be a twenty-four hour operation. Uh, so there has been a suggestion that for, uh, public safety and other reasons, there be a limit on the hours of operation. A couple of other cities are also considering what they're looking at for hours of operation. Um, this was discussed with the board at management update, uh, with a, the suggestion that the hours be, uh, similar to what a liquor store would be allowed to operate under OLCC. Uh, we went back and looked at that, and the, uh, hours that a liquor store is actually allowed to be open is seven AM to ten PM. Um, apparently, there is one liquor store that opens at seven AM in the state of Oregon. We also had information from the city of McMinnville that we're looking at, what's the, the times that is the most common opening time and most common closing time, and that was ten AM and seven PM. Uh, and so that's just some background information for the board to consider. Uh, and Scott, if you would describe what's currently proposed as an amendment, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, I'm Scott Norris from the Office of Legal Counsel. Uh, the amendment that is before the board, specifically subsection, uh, section three of the amendment, would add a new subsection to section eight of ordinance thirteen thirty-three. Section eight contains regulations governing medical marijuana dispensary facilities, and the, the specific amendment would say, "The business may not be open any day before seven AM or after ten PM." And as Gloria had mentioned, uh, the OLCC administrative rules governing liquor stores, uh, do not allow liquor stores to be open before seven AM or after ten PM. And if there are any questions?
Well, I'm gonna show what I don't know. So what, you say, any day? Not opens seven days a week? Is that the plan? Was that discussed by anybody?
The OLCC regulations, uh, do not, th- there's, they're, they're simply time, uh, regulations. They don't require, uh, specifically, uh, that they not be open on holidays or weekends.
All right. Other questions or comments?
I don't personally have a question about this, but I, I think it would be really helpful if, whether it's Gloria or Scott, give, again, we have a viewing audience, and we have many individuals here who have been walking through this process with us. For the sake of clarity, um, so that everyone's on the same page, if you will, this is an amendment. We have in place an ordinance. So could, could you give a little background so that it's in very clear, simple language? So any viewers or anyone here too, that we understand that it's real clear what, what this amendment means and what is it amending? What's the bigger issue?
Um, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'll, I'll take an attempt at that. This is obviously a very complex issue. Uh, there's the ongoing legislative back and forth, uh, for, um, a follow-up to House Bill thirty-four sixty, uh, which allowed medical marijuana dispensaries in, uh, certain zones, agricultural, uh, commercial and industrial zones, or mixed-use zones. Marion County did take a very proactive approach for this and, uh, made a policy statement that, uh, the, the policy of, of Marion County would be to ban to the maximum extent possible, but specifically farm and forest lands, because that is not an appropriate use when you look at a similar type facility. Marion County, uh, in terms of a land use perspective, uh, looked at this type of a facility, uh, similar to a pharmacy, and, uh, proposed that, uh, these facilities be allowed in similar zones that would allow a pharmacy. There, of course, are additional buffer zones, both from the state perspective as well as the county ordinance, uh, and additional restrictions that the county, uh, decided were necessary to meet the U.S. Department of Justice aid federal priorities. And there has been some, uh, follow-up even in the media that suggests that some of the things that Marion County has included as regulations are, are things that the, the Department of Justice would also consider important, such as background checks for, uh, employees. So this particular amendment is just regarding the hours of operation, should a facility, uh, make it through the exemption permit process, uh, and be properly, uh, located within the unincorporated areas of Marion County. And again, this is not within the cities. This is just in unincorporated areas.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, or perhaps a motion?
If you want to make a comment now, I'll just, uh, quickly say that, uh, we got a copy of the B twenty-one amendments to House Bill fifteen thirty-one, so that has been worked quite a bit. Uh, and I'm not sure that the time, manner, and place language are still, that we're in that original bill are still there, because I only have a copy of the amendment, but it does talk about reasonable regulations that cities or counties can place on the operation of medical marijuana facilities, including limitations on where a medical marijuana facility may be located within a zone described in the statutes. So that would be the place part of it. Reasonable conditions on the manner in which a medical marijuana facility may dispense medical marijuana, so that would be the manner part. And then the time would be reasonable limitations on the hours during which a medical marijuana facility may be operated. So, uh, our ordinance includes all of those things. So, just point that out. Now that we have this amendment.
Yes. And what if we approve this? Yes.
Is it my turn to make it?
And the first will be by title, if you-
Yes. Um, Mr. Chair, I, I would move that, the chair read, read by, um, title only. Uh, the ordinance regulating the hours of operation of medical marijuana dispensary facilities in the unincorporated, incorporated area Marion County and declaring an emergency. Read by title only twice.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to read by title only twice the ordinance having to do with the medical marijuana facilities. Let's see, any further discussion? Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and I'll read that twice now. This is an ordinance regulating the hours of operation of medical marijuana dispensary facilities in the unincorporated area of Marion County and declaring an emergency. And with the second time, an ordinance regulating the hours of operation of medical marijuana dispensary facilities in the unincorporated area of Marion County and declaring an emergency.
Now I'd move that we adopt the amendment to the medical marijuana dispensary facilities ban and ban exemption permit ordinance to regulate the hours of operation by emergency.
Second the motion.
It's moved and seconded to adopt the amendments, medical marijuana dispensaries has been read. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes. Uh, next item, staying basically with the same subjects, is consider approval of an order establishing fees for medical marijuana ban exemption permits. Joe Fenimore. Joe?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, this is Joe Fenimore. And this item is to consider approving fees for medical marijuana ban exemption permits. On the board adopted ordinance thirteen thirty-three, which established a ban and exemption permit for medical marijuana dispensary facilities. The ordinance allows the county to charge a non-refundable fee for processing the permit application, renewing an existing application, and approval of, and appeal of a permit that is revoked, suspended, or denied. At the, at management update on February twenty-fourth, the board, um, reviewed proposed fees and agreed that a two-hundred-dollar fee for a permit application and renewal of a permit was appropriate, as well as a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee for an appeal to the hearings officer of a revoked, suspended, or denied permit. The ordinance also requires a background check for employees and volunteers working at the facility by the sheriff's office. Um, the sheriff looked at the process would be required, and in, in order to recover the costs of the background checks, proposes a fee of forty-five dollars per person. Um, a final board order by the board is required, um, to complete the process. The board has the options of approving the order, direct staff to make changes to the order, or take no action at this time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Other questions? Yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead.
Oh, if I could just, uh, we had a discussion about this management update and went through kind of the rationale for the fees. So, uh, the two-hundred dollars, uh, if you could explain why you landed on two-hundred, and then the two-fifty, and then there's also a forty-five-dollar- there's also a $45 background check fee, so just talk about the reasons for those.
Yes, we looked at the accepting and renewing permits are basically doing the same thing. The applicant is required to provide certain information that we have to check and make sure is there. The background check from the sheriff's office, the permit from OHA has to be already issued, those kind of items. We review all that, make sure it's there, make sure the taxes are current, and then we can issue a permit at that time, as long as they're outside all the buffer areas. So, that will take staff time to do that, to keep track of those records, set up the files, those kind of items. As far as the appeal, we really have, won't know what that's going to actually cost or entail until we get to that point. As Commissioner Carlson pointed out during the meeting, we have an appeal fee right now for an appeal to a hearings officer, a valance decision for $250, so that seemed appropriate to put, we can always look at it later if something, if it's a lot less or more than that. I'm not sure about the sheriff's process. I'll let Loretta talk about that.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I met with Scott Norris, with Brian Wallace from the Civil Division of the Sheriff's Office, with Sergeant Baldridge from the Community Resources Unit, who will be the two divisions involved in this, as well as the sheriff and Commander Lad. And we looked at, by comparison, the cost, if OSP did it, the Oregon State Police, it's $20 for a fingerprint card, $33 for the state police to do the check, and $5 to get an odorized copy, which would then have to be brought back to the sheriff's office to compare it with the items, the requirements that are listed in the county ordinance. They did evaluate to make sure they could use the law enforcement data system for this licensing-type purpose. They evaluated what their staff time estimates would be, and determined that a $45 fee would be appropriate to cover the cost of staff to do this background check and to have it all done in one stop.
And if I could, it seems like $45 is pretty on par with what we do for other background checks around the, I mean, for people that volunteer at schools and that type of thing. And just to clarify also, so when a person comes in and gets the permit, as we're talking about, that's the $200 fee. And as you mentioned, that was just based on your estimate of, you're doing it at the desk, you don't have to go out and do site visits or that kind of thing, you're just making sure the paperwork is in order. And just for people here to kind of get a sense, 200 is really on the low end of what we charge for fees for land use types of proceedings, right? I mean, they can get up in the thousands of dollars for, depending on the type of permit that's required. The 250 only kicks in if someone's denied their permit, and then they want to appeal that denial to a higher authority, which would be the hearings officer. So, the 250 doesn't kick in if your paperwork's in order and you get approved, that's all that you would pay, along with whatever background checks you need for people that haven't had those background checks otherwise.
Correct.
And then, I guess, a question would be if there's a background check, if the owner and the operator are the same, and the background check has been done on the person already for Oregon Health Authority, do we require another background check on that person, or do we know?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, we would require it be done by the sheriff's office, because that's where the checking for the additional items that the Oregon Health Authority is not completed.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, is it my turn to make a motion? I think so. So, I would move that we approve this order establishing fees for the medical marijuana ban exemption permits.
I'll second the motion.
I would move and second to approve the fees establishing, establishing these fees for medical marijuana ban exemption permits. Further discussion?
Well, I'm wondering, we still have, we don't. I do want to make some comments on this whole issue, if this would be an appropriate time.
Chair?
First, I want to say thank you to everyone who's come, been involved, shared your opinions, your experiences, your concerns. And this is, it is such a complex, difficult issue, and we have to work together on it. That's just the bottom line. But I do want you to know, I'm not totally, totally comfortable with all of this, largely because there isn't the scientific and the medical research that really clarifies the issues that are of great concern. And that's where it's going to require more discussion, and really, the push, the need, and the advocacy to have that research and scientific, medical data that clarifies this issue of medical benefit. That's what really has to take place, and unfortunately, it has to take place at the federal level, but we can all be advocates for that to happen. But that's largely the dilemma for me. And the biggest problem I have is, of course, when it comes to our children, keeping our kids safe, keeping our kids away from drug addiction, drug abuse, making poor choices in their life, that really takes away opportunity for them to have a happy, successful life and to do good things as a citizen. And this discussion, unfortunately, I know many of you have commented on wanting to, I think yourself, talked about public safety, and that's important. But the fact is that marijuana is still the illegal drug that's most abused, and this is what gives me great concern as we move forward. And, excuse me, because there's been such a huge disconnect between federal, it being a substance one, the state taking some action, which is undetermined at this time, unless something happened this morning, it puts us, and this has been our issue for a long time, it puts us at the county and it puts our cities in a situation of not knowing what to do, because we don't have, House Bill 3460 is about the most poorly-written piece of legislation that has such tremendous impact on our children especially, and on our communities, our livability, and even your position of, and what you've shared as medical, if I use, personally use that term a little loosely, any medical benefit. It really has put a terrible burden in our lap, so we're struggling how best to give our law enforcement the tools to enforce and have the oversight, that the state is only going to have two field inspectors for 200 and some dispensaries that have just registered. This is ridiculous. That tells me they don't want to have oversight and enforcement when they didn't provide the adequate staffing. But there are a few things that I just want to share real quickly that still, like I say, just really bother me tremendously. And I'm, you know, I've shared before another booklet that was really helpful, the Oregon Health Authority put out. This, and I don't know who gave it to me, this is from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and there's really good information. It's geared to, it's Marijuana Facts Parents Need to Know. It's a revised edition. And it's really to help parents talk to their children about marijuana and the harmful effects and keeping kids away from it. A really, really big issue is, it is known scientifically, we talk about it in other areas, that young people, children's brains are not fully formed until they're well into their 20s. So, any medication can have a tremendous detrimental effect on their development, on proper, healthy development. And so, this book is a good guide for parents. I found it to be quite factual. I don't think it was slanted one way or the other. Fact, there are stronger forms of marijuana available to adolescents today than in the 1970s or the 1980s. Stronger marijuana means stronger effects. All forms of cannabis are mind-altering, meaning psychoactive drugs. They all contain THC, and that is, of course, the main active chemical and can have this harmful effect on young people, as young people's brains and their whole body is growing and reacting. Another point, and it was brought out previously, I think the message was fairly clear at the forum that the Public Safety Coordinating Council had, and someone else has mentioned it before, why do young people use marijuana? Well, all they're doing is looking at the adults in their life as role models. And when adults are users themselves, and I know this is a real fine line for your advocacy for a medical purpose, but nonetheless, and again, this is where we need to keep talking and learning more, but if a parent or a family member, an adult family member, is using marijuana, whether it be for a, and I'm going to put it in quotation, a medical use or a recreational use, what's the message to young people? The message is, it's okay to do. And they are learning what the role models in their family and in their people they interact with provide. Although research has not fully explained a lot of different effects on here, growing evidence suggests a combination of biological, social, and psychological factors are involved as a result of this. Marijuana affects many skills required for safe driving, alertness, concentration, coordination, and reaction time. We have a lot of young, young drivers on the road, and there's a huge impact there, as well as for adults who are using. A big concern of mine, I raised that before. I won't get into some of these other things here, but again, this was a booklet that's really good. There's a talk, too, about pregnant women and the effect of smoking marijuana and harming a baby. We all know you shouldn't smoke tobacco products. There's a tremendous effect on an unborn baby, but also children in the house, in the household. Same thing, marijuana users may have many of the same respiratory problems that tobacco smokers have, such as chronic cough and more frequent chest colds. How does marijuana affect the brain? This is that marijuana smoking affects the brain and leads to impaired short-term memory, perception, judgment, and motor skills. So, just to summarize it again, I have these concerns myself, and especially as it relates to our children, and the message that we're sending to them. We're trying to do here what is going to work, I believe, in an interim period, while many of these issues are sorted out, both federally and at the state level. And again, I will just, one other thing, too, the, there's been a connection or a relationship to pharmacies, and that's another area that I'm really uncomfortable with, because again, we don't have the, we don't have a federal or a state position that, well, you can't, you can't go to the pharmacy and buy marijuana like you can other products. So, that is something that also needs to be sorted out. And I just want to close by saying, again, we all need to understand that marijuana and the products here, federally, they are substance one. That means that the federal government sees currently no medical benefit, and it's classified with heroin, LSD, ecstasy, and some other drugs that we want our children to stay away from, that we want adults to stay away from. So, again, this is an issue that I hope those of you who are here, and many others who've been here before, that you, you will take the lead, and I want to, this is the issue that really needs to be straightened out, federal and state level. So, I'm agreeing to what we're doing here, because it is necessary that we do something, and we're doing the best we can, given state uncertainty and federal uncertainty.
All right. Forget where we left it. Had a motion and a second?
A motion and a second.
All right, to approve this order that establishes fees for medical marijuana. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Our next item is number five, under Public Works Planning, Consider Adoption of Administrative Ordinants, LA 14001, Amendments to the Marion County Urban and Rural Zone Codes by Emergency Procedure. Joe Fenimore, lucky you're still here.
Once again, good morning Commissioners. For the record, this is Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is to consider adoption of administrative ordinance amending the urban and rural zone codes by emergency procedure. The amendments proposed make it, or approved make it clear that both in the rural and urban codes, that permits will not be issued when property is being used in violation of state or federal law, and also that those uses are not permitted by the code. The board initiated the amendments in January, held a public hearing on February 12th, and on February 19th, the board approved the amendments and directed staff to prepare the appropriate ordinance. The board has the options of adopting the ordinance before you, direct staff to prepare modified ordinance, or choose not to adopt the ordinance at this time. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And are there any questions? We've been through this quite a bit. Go ahead, Commissioner Carlson.
Well, this is the last time that we've seen this, so we're bringing this back, just to put on the record. So, as Commissioner Milne was saying, marijuana is, contrary to federal law, is a medical marijuana dispensary completely banned because of this, and everything that we've done in terms of providing the ban exemption permit is a sham? Or is this something that is underlying our ability to ban, say, in the agricultural areas?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, it is the latter. It is the basis for us to be able to ban in the farm and forest zones. And I also want to, the language that's been added, you have to continue reading that sentence. It says, "Unless issuance of a permit or land use approval would correct the violation." This is specifically why we have the ban exemption permit, so that it is recognized, at least in the industrial, commercial, mixed-use zones. But this is the basis to allow us to say no to agricultural land, which is farm and forest lands.
And I just, I would just add that this is why we've constructed, with the very able help of our legal counsel, very carefully to navigate between these different questions and how federal and state and this local implementation work together.
Go ahead.
Okay. If there aren't any other questions or comments, I will move that we adopt the Administrative Ordinance, LA 14-001, Amendments to the Marion County Urban and Rural Zone Codes. Oops, and this is by emergency also, so I would move this back up. Move that the chair read by title twice.
All right, so the motion is to read by title twice. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so move and second to read by title twice, an administrative ordinance having to do with changes to the Marion County Code. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes, and I'll read it by title twice. This is in the matter of an ordinance amending Marion County Code Title 16, the Urban Zone Code, and Title 17, Rural Zone Code by amending provisions and declaring an emergency. The second time, in the matter of an ordinance amending Marion County Code Title 16, Urban Zone Code, Title 17, Rural Zone Code by amending provisions and declaring an emergency. All right, and now a motion to approve the change of ordinance.
Administrative Ordinance, LA 14-001, Amendments to the Marion County Urban and Rural Zone Codes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, moved and seconded to adopt Administrative Ordinance, LA 14001. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Our last... Our last item this morning, or next, I should say, is a public hearing. It's under Public Works Environmental Services. Been here an hour and a half, does anybody want a break, or shall we keep going?
Thank you very much.
All right, then we'll open that public hearing, it's Consider Changes to Marion County Solid Waste Ordinance, MC Code Chapter 805, Adding Service Area Standards. Alan Haley, Jeff Bickford, Todd Irvine.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Alan Haley with Public Works. We are here for a public hearing.
Excuse me, we've had trouble with that, our joke about chairs wasn't a joke. This is a legitimate, Todd, so.
Can't figure out the chairs.
So if you can't make it work, get another one.
I've got it.
All right, excuse me, Alan.
That's fine. I didn't know we moved it from up there. But to consider some, some changes to the solid waste ordinance regarding the placement and screening and enclosure of, and access to commercial-sized garbage and recycling equipment. So Jeff Bickford, our Environmental Services Manager, is here along with Todd Irvine from the Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association, to kind of explain how, what we're talking about and some verbiage so we can get the changes done to the ordinance.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Bickford, Marion County Public Works. Our current solid waste management ordinance, which is Chapter 805 of the Marion County Code, does not have any set standards in place for the placement, screening, enclosure, and provision of access to commercial-sized garbage recycling in compost containers. And by that, we're speaking about containers that are one cubic yard or larger. The inappropriate location and design of what we call solid waste service areas, which are these areas that contain these containers, actually can create unsafe working conditions for the drivers of collection vehicles and make the provision of the service for which they're hired extremely difficult. The City of Salem actually adopted a set of solid waste service area standards back in 2011. So these proposed service area standards, or the proposed standard that we're actually bringing to today, was written utilizing Salem's language, but it was brought in, you know, adjusted to fit our situation. But we wanted to have a continuity of operation so that, you know, from one side of the street to the other, outside the urban, outside the city limits and inside the UGB, that they would be consistent. Because we wanted to be able to provide that opportunity for developers so that, you know, if they're designing something in one, in this area, that they at least would have the same set of standards. So the ordinance was drafted, again, based upon that Salem language, and we brought it before our solid waste management advisory council, initially back in their August 2013 meeting. And it was discussed at subsequent meetings over the next couple of months. Ultimately, at their meeting on November 26, 2013, the advisory council passed a motion recommending to the Board of Commissioners that they consider and approve the amendment to the ordinance that you actually have in front of you. Just to give a little background on what this would mean, the proposed changes to ordinance really, again, applies only to new solid waste recycling and composting service provision areas, where, again, where there's a one cubic yard or larger container for any of those, or where there's a remodel of that service area such that a building permit would have to be pulled out for that remodel. Pretty unusual and probably not very likely to happen very often. So again, this typically is going to limit these requirements to new commercial and multifamily construction. There's a lot of that going on presently. And again, this is primarily going to, where we would expect to see this would be within the urban, broke down to go Salem and Kaiser, because typically you wouldn't have those types of developments out in the more rural locations. And again, the proposed ordinance additions really detail the standards for the receptacle placement, such as, you know, what type it needs to be, asphalted or concreted, screening from roads and adjacent properties, design of an enclosure, and most importantly, the availability of access so that the haulers can get their vehicles to them. I'm going to pass it to Todd briefly, Todd Irvine from the general manager for Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association, and let him explain what, really what their concerns and about, and what really instigated this process.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Again, my name is Todd Irvine with the Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association. And as Jeff mentioned, this is something that we, the haulers group, had approached the county here quite some time ago. And again, our primary concern is the safe access to the containers and, quite frankly, the safety of our employees. Commissioner Brentano can attest to his years in the solid waste business. Rolling out some of these containers can be quite problematic, they can be very heavy. And again, we're all about providing excellent service, but safe, excellent service. So again, we address this, have addressed it through your solid waste management advisory council. Again, as Jeff indicated, we basically took the language that the City of Salem adopted here a couple of years ago and have tweaked that somewhat to, to address your needs here. Quite frankly, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have today regarding the enclosure standards, and again, hopefully we're able to continue to provide safe and excellent service.
Commissioner?
Well, first of all, thank you for coming, and we've had a discussion about this, again, at Management Update, and kind of gone through the details of it. So I really don't have any questions, and it makes perfect sense to me, and I will be supportive. I guess my question is about, well, let me tell you a story first, quick story, and then I'll, and then the question will follow. So this covers, as I understand it, all new construction. And my husband was going over to an apartment complex to visit a family, so this would be existing construction. And there was evidently a large receptacle, like we're talking about, and they are really large and really heavy at apartment complexes, and it was chained to some sort of a fence with a padlock, but the padlock evidently had been left open and the chain was just hanging. So on his pickup, he backed up and he's got a hitch on the back of the pickup, so he backs up and the hitch touches the dumpster. And he looks, and he goes forward, just thinking, you know, he's backed up and he looks in the rearview mirror and he's hearing this rumbling and like, what's going on? And kind of like a scene in a sitcom, and it actually hit a car down at the bottom of the hill. So I won't go into kind of what happened after that, but so, so I can see where, you know, I mean, things that might have been designed for smaller receptacles now, if you don't have the proper enclosures, if you don't have the proper installation, that this can cause issues that people don't expect. So while I think it's great that we're doing this for new construction, I understand how difficult it would be to get in and try to solve everything. Are there ways that we can educate, inform, help folks who already have these receptacles to try to make it better so that things like what happened to us don't happen to other people?
Absolutely. You know, that's actually an excellent point, and we experience those on a more routine basis than we'd like to, than we'd like to admit. I do think that being proactive and, again, working with, typically what we try to do is work with any of the property owners or property management companies, where we have an issue, getting in there to service it. Again, a lot of it is the reluctance, well, it's either not in our budget, whatever that may be. But we certainly try to work with them on that, and again, as Jeff indicated, with any significant remodels, that kind of opens that back up. But I would love to hear any other advice you may have there, because, again, we're all about, and again.
Because obviously that's not safe, I mean, it could have hit a child, or, you know, I mean, who knows what it could have hit?
It's not safe, you're absolutely right. And again, these, the trucks now that we're collecting these with, some of the larger front-load trucks, again, are significantly different than the old rear-load style that they used to collect. So again, the trucks are much larger and it's very tight, tight situations oftentimes. So again, we definitely want to take a proactive approach and certainly will be happy to provide any type of assistance necessary there.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yes?
No.
I know you don't want to hear my garbage stories, but typically, I go back a little further, we, I was working on this in 1999-like, and I thought it was already in place. So I didn't become a Commissioner to finally get to solve my wish list. But what would typically happen, someone would, with an apartment, a business, manufacturing, whatever, they spend millions of dollars on their place, and then call in at the very end of the process, they bring my containers now and have no idea where or what. And you get into all these combinations, you can't get at it, it's not safe. And there's another point that already wasn't brought up here this morning, there's a, rates are kind of set on a time. You anticipate this much volume and it's going to take this much time to get it. Well, if you've got to go through a whole procedure, or perhaps run a special truck down just to deal with one situation, that's not quite the same. So I thought these were in place a decade ago, and if it helps for the future, I'd certainly like to see that. And it's really, like Todd was saying, it's working with the business owner to make out something that's going to work for everybody and be safe. Anything else? Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we close the public hearing and that we approve these, I guess we're just approving the ordinance, right? We're not approving changes to the ordinance?
It is actually an amendment to Marion County Code.
Oh, we're changing, an ordinance to change the code, got it.
Correct.
And this is by emergency, so do we need to do it by title only twice also?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll move to close the public hearing, and then do we need a separate motion to do by title only twice? Okay, so let's move to close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
And read it by title twice, or we're doing it all at once? Let's.
You can do it in one motion.
I can do it in one motion, okay, I was trying to figure out, because we usually haven't done this for a while. Okay, so I'll move to close the public hearing and that the chair reads this ordinance by title only twice.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded to close the public hearing and read this by title only twice. Further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes, and I'll read it by title twice. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 805 of the Marion County Code relating to solid waste management and declaring an emergency, and a second reading, and ordinance amending Chapter 805 of the Marion County Code relating to solid waste management and declaring an emergency.
And then, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the ordinance, this is the first amendment to the solid waste management ordinance that adds service area standards to the Marion County Code, Chapter 8.05.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded to approve the ordinance change to Marion County Code, Chapter 805. Further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Again, thank you all, and good to see you. That takes care of what we have on our agenda this morning, other to read, the places we'll be together in the coming week. Today, the 5th of March, at noon, it looks like we'll make this, it's a Woodburn, Marion County meeting at Luisis Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. Tomorrow, 9:30 to 11:30, Department Head, elected officials meeting here in the Commissioners' Boardroom, 1115 Commercial Street, Northeast in Salem. Monday, 8 o'clock till 3, Association of Oregon County's Governance Legislative Committee and Board meeting, Local Government Center, 1201 Court Street in Salem, going on at the same time, so we'll try to have at least two people there, two Commissioners. Monday, 9 to 11, Management Update, Columbia and Sandy M. Conference Rooms, 451 Division Street in Salem. Monday evening, 4:30 to 6, Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network, Marion Polk Strategic Planning Dinner Meeting, WVP Health Authority, 2995 Ryan Drive, Southeast in Salem. Tuesday, the 11th, 7:30 to 8:30, State and Marion County meeting at the Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third and Staton. That's followed at 9:30 to 10:30 with a work session, this is with the East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association, ESNA, and that'll be in the Columbia and Sandy M. Conference Room, 451 Division Street, Salem. Next Wednesday, 9 o'clock, our regular board meeting here in the Commissioners' Boardroom, 1115 Commercial Street. That's followed by, at noon, a Woodburn Forum Lunch, the Marion County, State of the County Presentation at the Woodlands, 1475 Monhood Avenue in Woodburn. That's followed at 3:30 on the 12th with EDA, Economic Development Advisory Board, that'll be in the Chameca Center for Business and Industry, Job Growers Boardroom, third floor, 626 High Street. And then, well, it's an anniversary date for me, the date my motorcycle broke down on the 12th.
I remember that.
6 o'clock to 7, Marion County, State of Marion County Presentation at the City of Mill City, City of Mill City, City Hall, Council Meeting Room, 441 South First Avenue in Mill City. So a busy week coming up.
It's also the anniversary of when you wrote me into singing at that Mill City event where you got to sing one note.
Well, wasn't that a pleasant?
It was, yes.
You know, I didn't do very good on that note.
We should have practiced.
Yeah, that would have helped. All right, anything else this morning? I'll just make my squealing way out of here, the meeting's adjourned.